Hey Penny, how you doing?
Penny!
So can we meet again?
Uh, this is Zoom meeting.
Yeah, yeah. Hey Penny, next meeting, they're open right here.
Alright.
Yeah. I'm having trouble with the, uh, the chip.
Some difficulties here.
Hey, could you?
At least it's not another tornado.
How was it down there in the lower Ohio?
Ours wasn't bad.
Oh, was it?
There was wind, I looked, I just happened to check the, uh, the weather at lunchtime and they said tornado warning up here, I'm like...
What, tonight?
No.
Oh, when that was going on, yeah.
I kept getting messages, "Are you guys okay? Are you doing fine?"
I was down in the field, yeah, I was a work resident. I was just really believing.
Wow.
What's going on?
It's like, well, shh!
Scared the crap out of me.
Wow.
When your power went off.
Yeah. And the one that said, "It's safe to go up the hill."
We need, they need...
Yeah, I think we, I think we got it.
Because, you know, older people rely on other people, you know, it could have been pretty devastating.
Yeah, but it was kind of scary with everything with, uh, oh, I don't know.
We never said that.
Everybody had their runnin' over iron.
We never said we was gonna share it.
Oh, generally, yeah.
That's, we're not doing it. We might give up a...
There's a whole humming pack there.
...charge one way or another, but...
My wife drive a darn if she gettin' to drive home from Franklin and started. Just push the chair, go away.
It's my cake, ready?
You ready?
Ready? Yeah, I'm ready. Hey, ready?
Yeah.
Okay. Welcome to the May 6th, 2021 Jay Township Authority meeting. Start with a pledge allegiance here. Okay, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all. Here we go. Alrighty. Row call.
Jim?
Here.
Yeah? Here. Lisa?
Yeah.
Fran?
Yeah.
Julie?
Yeah.
Um, myself, Brian Bloom, and Patrick Wachovich.
Yep. Here. Okay, the, the reported executive session that we had at our last meeting, uh, there's no decision has been made yet on anything, so...
That was at our last meeting, we had an executive session, nothing was, um, done on.
Legal matters?
Yeah, legal matters, I have it on the agenda.
Alright, okay, visitors' comments. Okay.
Am I first?
Bob?
Yes.
Yeah, go ahead, Bob.
Okay, I, uh, you just said your executive session was for legal matters. Uh, I sent you an email dated 4/8. Did anybody read it?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And what's your clarification of? I mean, according to President Seth that signed it in the email, I sent him two of them, and to say your executive session was for legal matters does not meet your requirements of law. So, uh, I mean, you're continuing to say that, and even on your agenda, under new business, you're the last item as executive session for legal matter. I mean, from what I read and interpret from law, the questions that are contained in that letter, you are not meeting up to the requirements of the sunshine here. The public has to have an idea of what the, like, executive session is about.
In the past, we've said, like...
Is there a document assigned to the legal matter?
Isn't it like... Like you could say Houston Township, or whatever, you can give some insight, ask them what it is.
Yeah, you can't give a lot of information.
Yeah, I think that's what he's asking for, is...
I mean, that's all you could get about if it's what party you're fighting with or whatever, but you can't give a lot of information out.
Would that satisfy you, Bob? That it's Houston Township that we're discussing? Can you hear me?
I think we do.
I think you froze. You froze? Figures.
I was always taught that it's just legal matters.
I think we might have lost Bob.
You know?
It'll be bad.
In the past, we've always, when I've done legal things, it's just for legal matters.
If you read the thing, you can't. It does say in there that it needs to be more of an explanation than, um, just legal matters, you need to give them a little bit...
Legal matters about Houston Township.
There you go.
Or legal matters regarding personnel, or legal matters regarding, just something basic.
That's fine.
And then the real...
Well, Bob can, yes, we can...
Back, Bob?
Yeah.
We lost you there for a little bit.
I think I'm... Can you hear me?
Yes, we're good now.
Okay. So, uh, the executive session, you're saying it's legal matters within the township?
Yes. That's right.
Okay, is this legal matter related to the, uh, uh, the workshop and the, uh, and the agreement?
No.
Oh, with the man, pardon me?
No. It's not for the sale agreement, no.
No, not for the sale of water.
No, it's not.
So, it's, it's really not informing the public what it is. I mean, I, I think you could make a general statement to give the public an idea. You don't have to go into the details of the negotiation here.
Yeah, I... You guys are gonna have to say what you need to feel.
Well, we're at pretty well settled after tonight anyways.
Yeah.
We're at pretty well settled after that tonight anyways, Bob, after the session tonight.
Okay, after, Franny, but the public has a right to know if this...
Well, I don't know what to tell you, Bob, we're going in, it's a part of Houston Township, uh, and they're involved in it with us, and that's all I can tell you.
It's a right-to-know request, did legal agreement.
Yeah, that's all I can tell you.
That's all I can tell you.
Okay, a right-to-know request and everything to feel by one of the parties.
That's, that's all I can tell you.
Yeah.
Okay.
Is that good?
Second thing, under the same subject, under new business, you have executive session legal matters, that's that one.
The same thing.
Okay. So these are right, you know, and requests.
That's correct.
Where does he see this issue? Or is he just brought up under this?
Okay, the next, uh, next item, uh, I had an inquiry, how was the, uh, the line location enforced for the, uh, the line of supplies Houston Township? Bob, just coincidentally, over the weekend, uh, I came across some maps here at the House of Corona CD. And I attached those to the email that I sent my inquiry, uh, that was, uh... I think it was the funding, it would have been made a second. And those, uh, those maps were done by Gibson, Gibson Thomas, that was the former engineer for the water thing. And they detect the line going up to the first water tank, it comes off the hill, and it hits on Chestnut Street. And then there's, uh, no map in there that tells you where it goes, but then at Spruce Street, it shows the continuous, continuous continuation of the line going down to the end of Spruce Street, and a road board going across the road, and then up towards Scannertown.
Stumble, nick and lean.
Can anybody explain how the line hits from, uh, what's showing on the map of the Chestnut Street down to Spruce Street?
They, uh, when they built, when Houston connected, um, they built the tank, they added the extra filter train, they brought a six-inch plastic pipe from the tank to the corner of Chestnut, um, where the fire hydrant is that you saw on the map, they connected from that to the existing transite. They crossed it, and then there was a main valve there, and beyond the main valve was where it connected to the transite. From there, it was all transite.
Now, that section of line then was all transite from, uh, Chestnut Street to, uh...
Pine Avenue all the way down to Spruce.
Okay, that, that makes sense.
Yep, and that continued through the street crossing.
It's kind of hard to understand what's going on when you can't attend meetings and ask questions, and so what's this, uh, defined out after the past?
Yep.
I have a question, Bob, I have a question for Bob. Bob, you have that CD, um, how do we store our documents?
We, we don't have that CD, Bob, we'd have to ask you to send us a copy of that, or send us a copy of that if we can't find that.
Well, I can take it and, uh, copy anything on it and email it to you.
If it's small enough to do that, then yeah.
And if it's of interest to you, there may be other things of interest to you on it.
Absolutely.
Okay, uh, let me see what I can do if I can copy it, or, you know, I, I want you to give it back to me. I mean, it was probably a hint that I came to hold this.
Yeah, absolutely.
I would guess, uh, there's a copy up there somewhere, although we went through...
We didn't throw anything away up in Florida.
We went big where up there, and where you are now, so, uh, if you can't find it, yeah, I'm, I'm happy to, uh, bring it up, and you can copy it, or look at it, see what you want.
Wonderful, yeah, we appreciate it.
Thank you.
Yep.
Okay, I have one other item, uh, I think, uh, oh, I can't really get the... What it is, we came across, there's this, some of this pricing. Uh, over the weekend, I got to review the, uh, the Borough Council, uh, Consulman's Guide. And in there is a section about, uh, the governing body serving as members on authority board. For example, in the past, you've had township supervisors on there, uh, that were not authority, you know, they were elected officials in the township. So, so I don't just, uh, just communicate here, let me just read a free quote. However, the Articles of Incorporation of Authority, an authority may prohibit elected officials from serving on authority boards, and these provisions are enforceable in the courts. The Borough Code authorizes the official who serves in both capacity. Now, what this is saying, you can, uh, amend, what I get, uh, you can amend your Articles of Incorporation, so the elected officials of the township are prohibited from, uh, serving on the board. And, you know, in effect, uh, what I could see substantially happening, you have three elected officials, if they in collusion or points to three of them each other to this board over three years, they would have control, they would be the quorum.
You're right.
And now, if they wanted to exercise their right as the quorum on the board, they could tell the authority, and there's been letters advocating that in, uh, the past two years. So, uh, I'm not telling the board what to do, or you would have to take my advice in, uh, but I'm suggesting you may want to look into this to see if you might want to amend your articles, and by all means, you should discuss it with the Celestia, I mean, I'm no regard. So, if you want to pursue it, I would suggest you contact your Celestia, and it may benefit you in the long term.
Absolutely.
Now, I'm gonna become a special.
You're just running up comments.
Where did you find that, Bob? That article?
I can send you the, uh, the manual, and it's on page two, it says, uh, it's right at the bottom, it says incompatible options.
Okay, thank you.
And, uh, if you read that section, now, this is dealing with boroughs, but I'm guessing the same thing would apply to seven-class townships. So, have a look at it.
We'll definitely look into it.
Thank you.
Yep, you're welcome.
Okay, Bob, is that it, Bob?
I think so, now, if you got it on, get someone to check.
Yeah, I, uh, the only reason I muted you last time was, uh, we could hear Nancy's TV and stuff in the background, so I muted everybody. So, as long as there's no crazy background noise and stuff, I, if the board's okay, that'll leave it up.
Okay, there we go, thank you for hearing me out, and, uh, thank you for zooming in.
Okay, Bob, thank you.
Thank you.
Alrighty, prove the agenda.
Uh, oh, go ahead, Nancy's jumping in, I don't know if Christine had any comments.
Oh, I didn't know they were on.
Okay, Chris, Nancy.
Can she hear?
It still says connecting, I can see her, but it says connecting.
Is Christine on too?
Um, she's on there, I think she can hear us. Nancy or Christine, any comment?
Can you hear me now?
Yep.
Um, back to Houston Township, um, who submitted the right to know, the question, you or Houston?
One of their customers.
Yeah, one of their customers, Christine.
One of Houston's customers?
Yes.
Okay, uh, I sent a visitor comment today. Um, you were to be given a list tonight of the businesses and separate garages, you were gonna discuss it, but I don't see it on the agenda, so maybe you're not doing it tonight. Um, I just wanted to know, it says also et cetera, so does the et cetera mean that you will also be reviewing hotels that have apartments, uh, apartment buildings and similar structures?
We was looking...
Or you're only doing businesses, I mean, your rates must be uniform to everyone.
We understand it, these are, we're going down the list here, or we've got the list, and it's who's not really paying actually a readiness-to-serv charge for their business or anything, they shouldn't be paying a readiness-to-serv charge, and that's what we're looking at at this list.
Christine, for sorry, I don't think we got the email, would I have you resend that?
Okay, your rate, as I said, they must be fair and uniform for all users. Your water rate schedule in your regulations...
Yeah.
Shows that the schedule for rate is based on each unit. There's a definition somewhat of unit in your regulation.
He said that to six on the bottom.
Yes.
The final decision is made by the board.
We might want to, yeah, make sure it's second page.
You might want to take a look at removing...
Or before it?
Final decision by the board, I mean, you can't have a decision for one group and a different decision for another group.
That's, we're not making any decisions or change.
One of the examples, um, the best way I can tell you example of what I'm thinking about is, um, the tariff. That's 22 units. And you're having a written agreement with the tariff that, you know, your rates will be uniform just as they all for all users with them. But, um, they are charged, they, each apartment is considered a unit. So that's 22 units, and they currently pay a readiness-to-serv charge for each one of those apartments. Now, if you have an apartment building in the township, and let's say they have two apartments in it, you should be charging each apartment a readiness-to-serv charge, are you currently doing that?
Most people are.
That's something you need to look at, yeah, I mean, not just businesses, you have to look at apartments and others. Are you, are you going to do that?
Yeah, we're gonna look into everything. Uh, that's why he created that list, and, um, you know, we're still in discussion, actually, right?
Yeah, exactly. We might make that part of our executive session to talk about this whole thing before we come out with it.
Yep.
You better pull out your regulations and review that, or we do the rate schedule.
Got it right here, Christine.
Did you tell him?
Okay, thank you.
Alright, thank you.
Hey Christine?
Yeah?
We did not get your email for, that you sent today.
Okay, thank you.
Uh-huh.
Okay, to pursue the discussion on water, making an executive session, I will object to that in that it doesn't meet the criteria for executive session.
That's not...
The list should be made. Thank you.
Okay. Okay, approval of the agenda.
It's Nancy's problem.
Oh, Nancy, yeah, Nancy, you have questions?
Uh, no, I just have doubts, so no, I don't at this time.
Alright, thank you. Okay.
Let me know if you get called. I gotta call.
Okay, we got reg, approval of the minutes, regular...
No, we need...
We need to approve the minutes.
Approve the agenda.
Of the agenda, alright.
And we got approval of the minutes.
We have two things we need to add on to the new business. What you said...
No, the agenda.
And we need to...
Oh, I just want to...
Yeah, we need to put some things on.
We're just bringing, we're just bringing it out at the end of the meeting to talk about, yeah.
Yeah, we were talking about the Assistant Secretary to add it on.
Assistant Secretary.
Do you want to add that on?
Yep.
And I have, uh, an internship program.
Okay, move that, move that, uh, executive session down about seven.
Yeah, I get the intern.
Okay, make that seven, so we do that last.
We aim for six.
And she wants that, uh, secretary, we're gonna make that number, uh, six.
What's number five then?
Well, number five is the readiness-to-serv charge thing that we're...
The right-to-know request.
The right-to-know.
Look at it.
Okay?
That's, you don't put that on, that'll be not the last one, readiness-to-serv.
The readiness-to-serv thing, that paper, and the other one is the secretary, we'll make that number six.
Assistant Secretary, and the internship number seven.
Internship.
Assistant Secretary.
Do you have a question?
I think they'll explain more when they get to it.
Yeah. Okay. So we need, need an appro, need a motion to approve the agenda?
I have a motion to approve the agenda.
Can I have a second?
No, second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, all opposed? Okay. On to approval of the minutes. This would be the regular meeting minutes, April 1st, 2021, work session with Houston Township, April 19th, 2021, work session with Jay Township, Sewer Authority, April 22nd, 2021. Can I have a motion to approve those minutes?
I'll make the motion. Proven those minutes.
Okay, I'll second that motion, and all in favor?
Aye, I have them standing, I have them here.
Okay, and, uh, all opposed? Alright. Cheers.
The balance and checking account is of 331, 2021 was $7,885.17. Total deposits was $57,470.74. Um, the, uh, total, total accounts payable was $35,043.49, plus an NSF fee for checkup, $182. Balance and checking account is of 430 was $30,130.42. Balance and savings account is of 331, 2021 was $266,292.25. Balance and savings account is of 430, 2021 was $256,302.78. $10,000 was transferred to checking due to, uh, we had to pay some bills.
That's it?
Mm-hmm.
Alright, approval of the bills.
Was that something unexpected, Sharon?
Well, we had that $19,000 for a string crossing, so I didn't have that in the, so...
Got it.
So I only had to transfer ten of that. Um, the bills are per, total was $35,043.49.
Okay, can I have a motion to approve the bills?
I'll make a motion, please, go.
Okay, count a second?
Can I do that? No, I wasn't here.
Alright.
You guys...
Now you cannot, because you got a copy of it.
Okay, I'll make a motion, sorry.
Alright.
Then I'll second that.
Get some back, at least a second, okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, all opposed? Okay, correspondence. Well, we must do vogs. Yeah, did vogs, the, our attorney sent us kind of some rules here of the, of the disposal of the fire hydrants.
You may want to, you might, you would want to discuss this under the sale of the fire hydrants and the thing, when we get to the, when it's on the agenda, yes.
Alright, okay, alright.
We have two letters from, one's from Coppolo and Coppolo, and one's from Stacy Snyder.
And I read both of them, and, uh, I think, uh...
They didn't give us the Stacy Snyder's letter?
I think we should read all the correspondence, frankly, because...
Yeah, we, we, we got to, I read them all.
Well, and to the people on the other end.
Yeah, but Bob already went through his.
Yeah, that's, Bob did his very well.
Yeah, and Stacy Snyder, I mean, that's just pretty much what he's been asking for in the past.
I think we should just read all the correspondence.
Go ahead, read it. We do, we do.
I might want to.
Alright, sure. The Coppolo and Coppolo, Jay Township Water Authority, RE Stacy Snyder Denise Cunio. Dear Sir and Madam, I retain, the, I am retained to represent the Law Office of Denise Cunio Esquire, as well as Miss Cunio and her husband Stacy Snyder. I understand the Water Authority needs to inspect and potentially replace various meters throughout Jay Township due to zero readings. Certainly, Mr. Snyder and Miss Cunio are willing to work with the Water Authority to inspect these meters at an appropriate time when they can also be replaced. My understanding is that the grant money for meters that need replace has not yet been approved. Would you kindly clarify this issue for me? Also, I believe it is best that the Water Authority schedule any appointments to inspect these meters, or in the future, as anticipated, uh, replace them through my office. I certainly wish to minimize any interference and interaction between the Authority and my clients. Thank you for your consideration and attention, Thomas R. Bevan Ridge.
Beveridge.
Oh, Beveridge.
I have been in contact with Mr. Beveridge, we've been playing phone tag since I got this letter, and we've just been playing phone tag, and I can't schedule anything with him.
I thought we pretty much covered this at the last meeting.
Yes.
You were going to contact them because they're in meetings, they're, they're showing no readings at all, but no, what, a year's time?
Year and a half.
So, I mean, and you were told to contact them and make an appointment.
But then, in the meantime, we got this letter, so I've been trying to schedule with Tom Beveridge.
That's fine.
And I've been playing phone tag, and I've been telling them, you know, so that's where that stands.
Just so we're making a, you know, a call, and trying to make an appointment, so we're not barging in and whatever.
Okay, I could have... This happened, they went to the, to her office, and were asked to leave because they were refused to allow them to work with them. So, so then we get this letter, and then we get another letter from him, so how much are we supposed to?
Yeah.
Well, that's when she calls him, she can tell him that he's been trying to contact them and make an appointment.
We're setting a precedent here for other customers if we don't do this.
I also talked to my solic...
I think so.
Yes.
I also talked to my solicitor, and he told me what to say to this here's other, you know, her lawyer, but he says, "We don't even have to answer these letters, once we re, once we discussing a meeting, I don't have to reply by mail to them, it's in the minutes, we discussed it publicly." Okay, that's what we know.
As long as we acknowledge it.
Yes.
Okay. Do you want me to read that?
Can I say something else?
Sure.
Absolutely.
If you haven't been able to read your meter report, how have you been charging them for a year and a half?
The, the meter reads, but it hasn't shown consumption, any consumption. Um, when we're done reading, I always go through and look at the zero reads, and make sure those meters are functioning properly. Uh, they're, sometimes they're stuck, sometimes it's someone that just doesn't use water. I am compelled to believe that in a year and a half, she should have used some, some water, so I have to do my job looking at everyone's meter, and if, if it flags as a zero, I send the guys out to check it, so...
But the meter in their home, their residence is okay?
Yes, but we're getting grant funding through, uh, to replace all the meters in Burndale, so it will eventually be replaced.
Okay, thank you.
Then the other one was about the fire hydrant.
Well, I still have...
Oh, that's for, okay, that's...
Shall I?
No, when it goes to executive, right?
No.
Or, I mean, to new business.
Well, just 'cause everybody knows that, everybody's saying, when people write letters, I think they should be read so that they know we're addressing them, and not just...
I guess if I have a visitor's comment, I've written a lot of letters to the township that don't get read, but every single...
Don't use that as a precedent, because I think that's gonna change as well.
I know, I hope so, because there's been letters I've written that don't get read, but anything Jim or Stacy reads gets read, so...
Well, that's unfair, and that should be changed too.
Yeah, I think so.
So, yeah, I agree with you there.
It's a lot of stuff that's already been covered, it's up to you guys if you want to read it or not.
I just want to get it out of the way, get it in the...
We've talked about this at the last meeting, but it's up to the board what they want to do.
I don't think it should be read.
Yeah, I mean... On to delinquencies.
I disagree.
Well, we can vote on it.
Sure, we can.
Okay.
I think we should read all correspondence, rather, no matter if it's flattering or unflattering. I make that motion.
Have a second?
My thing is, as long as we recognize it, acknowledge it, and, and then I think if one of us has a problem with it, to bring it open to the board, and to see what we want to do with it, otherwise, we just drop it.
and to see what we want to do with it, otherwise we just drop it. There you go.
Do you think that that's a good thing?
I think it because, I mean, if you've got something to say on that thing there, if you want to.
No, I have nothing to say.
Okay, that's. See, we we acknowledged it. We 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 kind of already spoken what we thought of it, so there's no sense of going on no more, I don't think.
But I think if you all agree that this is harassment or whatever you want to call it.
I just feel they wrote the letter. I don't take it as harassment or anything. I read it. I don't, I I'm not going to push the issue any further. Yeah. That's my opinion. Yeah, we voted.
They voted.
I read.
Died for lack of a second.
Yep, died for lack of a second.
Okay, where are we at now? All right, delinquencies.
There is no delinquencies at this time because the bills went out in June, May twelfth.
Oh, that's.
Okay, Patrick, maintenance report.
Okay, uh seventy-three thousand, three hundred fifty miles on the F-250 utility, fifty-four thousand, sixty miles on the uh two thousand eight F-550 dunk. Responded to nine-one calls, checked facilities and buildings, cleaning and tidying up the plant, rinse and wash trucks, install new meters in Scattered Town. That was a continuing to install. Mowed grass, light heater on the furnace after the gas company was finished, clean up the yard, over plowing around the plant before mowing. Repair, no read meters, um went with sewer authority to do shut offs for them, picked up the new tailgate, uh did some maintenance on the F-550, fixed the tire on the boring machine, cut fallen trees on the well road and at the well building, serviced the mowers, sharpened blades, cleaned the decks, charged the batteries, cleaned out the inside of the trucks, put mud flaps on the front of the F-250 and smoothed out the Scattered Town meter building road, fill potholes on the well road.
And I did see you got the new tailgate on.
Yes, yep, the new tailgate is on.
All right, work all right.
Yep.
Okay, operators report.
Distribution flow and water produced were down from both, um which is good. Five point three million gallons on distribution. Water produced is just shy five point one million. Um, surface plant was four point nine million of that and a little bit from the well just to keep it exercised and used as needed, hundred seventy-five thousand thirty-three. Completed and submitted DEP required reports for the month of March, completed daily lab tests, bacteria samples submitted to the lab, regulatory samples picked up by the lab. Backwash filters, back flushed intakes as needed, logged monthly data into Excel, filled chemical drums and mixed phosphate, checked chlorine analyzer calibration, edit, review and resubmit emergency response plan. Um, I've just got notification that it was accepted, so the recent, most recent revision is the current one. Adjust backwash flows, readjust it again after speed control valve was rebuilt. That was on the backwash. Recall from the last meeting, I mentioned the filter train two. Um, I was not getting any flow from it. Um, that was rebuilt. We are now back to all four filters functioning properly. Download readings to the computer, make adjustments for new change outs, troubleshoot the issue with bill printing. Um, they, since we switched the new computer bills when we print, we got that straightened out. We had to have Troy come in and uh look at it. Changed phone numbers in the auto dialer, needed to add eight-one-four. Um, kept Dennis up all night one time. Troubleshoot compressor failure alarm issues, adjust compressor, switch springs, et cetera. Check line pressures near Valley Farm Market after a customer had asked, and I also checked um on carbon lane. Gathered paperwork and data for seminar meeting, sample sludge, uh I sampled sludge from the basin, sent it to the lab. Brian, if you could tell Tom, we're less than two percent solids.
Okay.
It's actually a lot lower than I thought it would be. Um, and that's totally dried with an oven, so press it'll be higher because there's some moisture content. And start to work on O and M plan revisions.
Before you leave this page, could I ask you for a copy of your emergency response plan? I have no idea what you mean.
We just got that. I get you that on Monday.
Monday?
Yep.
On the O and M?
Yes.
As I it's it'll be printed as submitted, so.
Then that was that it, Patrick?
That's it.
Julie, can you pull that door?
Are you getting chilly?
No, just, I mean, don't need to be the whole way open. Keep enough flood or something, so.
Okay.
Got a little breeze.
I like the birds.
Okay, on to old business. CDB grant, Forest, Pennsylvania, update string crossing.
Okay, uh so string crossing is smaller. I'll give an update on that right now. Um, Rick is, we talked to Rick today. Rick's supposed to be in next week to start begin restoration of yards and that final paving will follow that. Um, we also talked with the homeowner right there on the corner, Spruce. Um, he discussed, same thing, Franny, as you mentioned, the rock's coming down a little bit, so we're going to get that. We're going to get that tapered back and bring that in kind of from the bottom of those mega blocks, kind of tuck it in a little bit, build that back up.
It's part of the restoration.
Yeah. Yep, um, like I said, Rick's, they're planning on being in next week to start all yard restoration. We talked to a pile of people down in the area, a bunch on Spruce, a bunch on Pine today. They seemed okay with that answer. Again, we apologized for for it taking so long, but as we see the weather's rain and snow this weekend again. Um, so he's going to be doing that next week. So we also went through, looked at valve boxes, curb boxes, saw which ones with with Patrick and Justin's assistance, saw which ones might need either backed out or reset a little bit just so we can access them. Um, Patrick said he had an issue getting all one of them, so they went through and we went through and marked every one that might need adjusted or cleaned out a little bit. Mainline and curb boxes. Um, talked to Jeremy Rippey today about Ash Street and different ways that we could pave it or tar and chip that, so we're going to get a definite answer back from the township on that. Um, and like we said, as soon as restoration is complete, as soon as yard restoration's complete, um, they're going to have a milling machine in here to take off part of the temporary paving and any cold patch. Um, don't dig up any of the areas that are sinking, unpack good stone back in and then put top coat over it all.
The only question I I have, since I've been looking down there, why do we have like eighteen main shut offs? And we've got three in every corner of this, right in the center of the road.
Well, most of the time, if there's if there's three, it's it's some kind of T. And I mean, you can you can ask Patrick, the more shut off valves, the better. That way, whenever we do have a leak.
It's a.
Yeah, we're only cutting off water to smallest amount of people possible. That way, if we have one at Ash and one down over the hill at Hemoff, we'd be shutting down a huge section of line. Now with more mainline valves, we can isolate it to.
Small section.
Fifteen to twenty houses instead of eighty houses.
Well, you're you're shutting off four or five on one street with three. I mean, it's just a lot of, a lot of shut offs in the middle of the street that, you know, they're that big around. For one, you could put one on each street to shut off. You could have went up the street with the line and just shut off one on each street would have made much more sense than three of them right there where you're going to plow and all the things up all the time.
Yeah, well, if if they're going to hit them, we can easily adjust them up or down and they're they're going to be flush with the pavement, just like the sewer manholes in the center of the street.
Yeah, I just was wondering why, I mean, that's a lot of them for a time.
I'd have to like picture, but we could walk through sometime and I can give you, like, this valve would be, okay, if there's a leak up this street, I don't have to go.
Well, I understand what you're doing. I I mean, I could just see one on every street where you shut that street off. Yeah, but if a T going somewhere else. But you got three mains. You got four or five mains. Franny, every town I've ever been to has valves, just like that, every town. That's a little bit overcome, I think. No, it's the same everywhere. Okay, so.
We, Franny, in in your case, we always tried doing that as standard practice, just so we can kind of, like we said, minimize the area. If we do do another project and and we can surely look at that again.
Yeah, I surely would just shut one street off all the time.
Yeah.
You don't need three valves going each way.
But I guess if if you look at the corner of Pine, if I just shut that valve off, you'd have oak, maple and that whole section of pine off. That makes that makes for a lot larger of a boil water advisory and a lot more people without water.
And it's done now.
Yeah.
No, you can't do that.
Well, I have this up here, the actual spec if you need that.
Oh, I wanted this.
For the restoration.
Yeah, I'd like that.
That's what she mentioned. You had asked about it, so.
Yeah.
I figured I could bring that up for you.
Because I don't know what the contract is, you know, what the.
Yep, anywhere that's dug up is going to get restored. Um, we did talk to, I talked to Rick today too about Mary Ellen's.
Yeah, what you do in the basement, Mary?
Um, so he, the one on the corner where when we did have the leak.
And you can put the mud.
It flooded her basement. Um, his and their insurance company is still denying it. I think at this point we.
Theirs are or his is?
It continental.
Continentals. Why are they denying it? Because the basement had mud in it before that water. Oh, I don't think it was that bad. Yeah, yeah, well, I was there. I was there. I was the first one there. First one there, first thing, first words out of her mouth. I get water in my basement all the time. Don't worry about me. I get water in my basement all the time. Doesn't flash it. When you have a big uh. Trust me, that mud was there. I don't think it was that bad, so.
If the board's okay with it, I mean, it it's fairly standard practice. It's it's not the greatest thing, but if we can.
To Stacy would be up there and no money goes out till that's cleaned up.
Well, and that's.
Because that's a mess.
If we can, I think we need to contact our insurance and that way, if they show that it's not our fault, then they'll go after Continental's insurance.
Well, not contacting our insurance, you contact your insurance. You guys inspected it, you guys engineered it. We weren't going to contact ours. Weren't part of the water break. Well, they were there and engineered it. And you engineered a water break? They inspected it before it went together. Yeah, but the thing about the thing about it, the water, the water line didn't break where we put in. The transite blew out below where we put in.
But was it due to the contractor being there doing the work? That's all.
That's what's going to have to be true between two insurance.
Ours will look at it and they say.
Oh, donate it.
They will pay for it. That's why we have insurance. If it's shown that it's backdoor and not in our limits and it was caused by the contractors digging at that point, then they'll say, no, it is your fault. It is on your insurance.
Well, somebody's got to fix that lady's house.
Yes, yes.
Is that all? Is that all you have or?
Yes, that's all I have for the boards.
Okay, phosphate. That'd be you too.
Same up as before. Um. Uh, we've run the well a couple of times. I've seen no issues at this point, so continuing as planned.
Yeah.
Or as as it is.
All right. Okay, main gate, slide gate. It's been going on forever. Patrick, you you have the quotes for the sliding gate, right?
I don't have it. What you shared in the broadcast.
It's five thousand something.
Okay. Yeah, we know. We we know the amount. We've talked about it a million times. It's time to get it, so.
Five thousand.
I want a motion to proceed on having the the company that you have there to come and install the gate.
I make a motion to uh go forward with the slide gate, quote five thousand dollars.
It's five thousand something. I don't know exactly the whole amount.
No, no problem, just a slide.
It's just a slide gate. That's what I said, slide gate.
Someday later, when things are better, maybe we can have the, you know, the automatic put in. But can I have a second? For the uh sliding gate?
We're talking about the slide gate. You were talking to Brian.
Yes, I was.
Okay. And made a motion because we we had, we put this in the budget at the beginning of the year.
Where does it show up? What what is it under?
It's in the.
It was in the budget.
I know, but what does it cost? What's it under?
We just need to vote for it.
I I made the motion.
Yeah.
It's probably capital improvements or something.
We got a second? Yeah, do we have a second? Yeah.
He seconded it.
Oh, you seconded?
He made a motion.
Not done with the motion.
All right, then. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
No.
Yeah. Okay, job description. That's the meeting that we didn't go to because of the other two meetings, so we'll have to make a new meeting.
Yeah, the the one, no, I couldn't attend or whatever. I was out of time for a funeral.
But then we had two meetings in the same one.
Yeah, that's, you know, so.
So we have to redo that, so.
So whatever you guys have for.
We want to set a time up that we can. Yeah, we got to get that. So what you're saying is we need a workshop?
Yeah, so workshop.
Okay, all right. Um, let's go on with the rest of the meeting and at the end of it, let's let's come up with a time and a day as good for everybody to. That's good to get.
Yeah, we can even do that.
We scheduled it the twenty-third of April or, yeah, well, after the um sewer authority meeting, I was out of time due to a funeral and um we just had two other meetings that week, so we changed, we we didn't do it.
It all blended together.
Yes.
I remember seeing that on the.
Job description and tap fees. We wanted to do that.
Okay, so we want to try to schedule a workshop for that, well, not try, do. Okay. And then uh the CDB grant Burndale. What's happening there?
Tracy hasn't received final order on that yet, so.
Tracy Gerber?
Yes. Yep, we're still waiting on her to get final funding for that and then we'll be able to order the meters for that.
Wonderful.
Like we said before, I mean, that'll that'll get us close to half of our meters spring.
Wonderful. Okay, code and short application for water service. How's that coming?
Did we refresh me? Yeah, did we approve? I think we tentatively approved it.
We approved it, but we were debating on whether we were boring or you were waiting for.
Okay, yeah, so we got the, we got back from the township. Um, I believe we're going to attempt to bore it. Um, if we have to, we'll dig. But if uh if the board's approving the tap, we should get him, let him know and and get his uh fee out to him.
You know, seems to me at the last meeting when we talked about this, didn't they give you some specs on some blacktop? Yeah. You know, that like you're going to blacktop two fifty-five out here.
Yeah, if we do any of the papers that we have to use, uh we have to follow their protocol, so.
We have to use hot.
Base coat and then I think they still want it topped on top of that.
Well, we just have to do what the they want.
Yeah, because they technically technically follow the Pendo specs for any kind of.
Now, I guess Justin spoke to it or Rick or Jeremy. As far as cane road goes, if we cut it, um, I guess they were okay with cold patch, but we would still probably do hot just because we have other roads to do. That way, there's no question.
Yeah.
On uh.
Yeah, even if we have a few boys to pick them up.
Yeah, yeah, we can put it in the dump and we have a tarp for the dump truck for it. Um, he's papered us before, so.
So either way, we're getting done. The only thing we didn't discuss yet is uh pay scale.
Right, and as it is, it would probably remain the same. Hopefully, we don't have to dig it.
Yeah, you're you're supposed to make down some bracket for us, breakdown for us, what it would cost to do a digging now.
Right.
You know what I mean, for a hookup.
Yeah, we could.
I thought we discussed that, that they had to cover all the costs and everything and.
Yeah, we.
We have to make.
Well, that's going to be part of the cap fee.
Yeah.
We got to make, we got to make.
This was back in January.
Yeah, we just never, we just never come up with the actual price and what the.
I'll have Justin get a hold of, the paving companies are open again, so I'll have him get a hold of companies and we'll get, like, we'll get an average width of a road, an average width of a cut and see approximately.
Much of material.
Paving wise, what the material would be and then, because you'll need that anyway for the tap fee and stuff, so.
Yeah, you have to get that together, then we can make.
We get that together and.
Then we can write it up.
Mr. Short, you don't want to do it. Isn't it for a camp?
It's for.
Oh, yeah, garage, garage.
Put the money into that.
But we wouldn't be able to enforce it until you revise the tap fees. As it stands now, he's only allowing for five hundred. You'd have to, you'd have to make the.
Yeah, we have to come up with our new agreement.
Right.
Yeah. And you know, and what still confuses me, all them road cuts that they did for us, was that last year, Patrick?
Probably two years at this point.
Yeah, that they put all base coat in. Why, they need to follow their own Pendo specs. Oh, I.
The answer.
All that I know. You understand, I, no, don't get me wrong. I understand. We go up Gardner Hill or something and dig across a brand new road.
Yeah.
I understand that, but across some tar and chip road, I mean, Jay Township wants to blacktop the entire community, out of the community. Any place there's a place to go see an elk or something, they want brand new blacktop, but every street in this whole entire community is falling apart. But we have to, when we dig across this street right here, this tar and chip road, it hasn't been blacktopped in how many years? We have to follow Pendo specs. We're just do our best. That's all we can do.
Yep, and ask them, it doesn't hurt to ask them too many questions.
It's like, what are you going to do?
What are you going to do? We're going to follow rules and that's going to be it. We're not going to. Yeah, we got to follow the rules, but they don't.
Do you have?
At this time. Yeah, at this time, yeah.
Yeah, is that. Okay, well, we could cover that now, maybe. Ju, speaking of. Just speaking of, uh, cutting roads crossing, um, there was some, I don't know if we brought it up last meeting or not, there was discussion of, um, issues right here by the plant. They didn't connect the line down the road to the end because there's a lot, a lot of rock at the end of the road here. They kept hitting a lot of rocks, so they put in a blow-off. Um, we've been getting a lot of complaints from the dead end to, we have to flush it frequently. He's getting sediment in his, uh, house because it's, it's settling, so, uh, Brian, Justin and I had discussed an option that we could go, is go across the road and tap the six-inch over there. And what kind of triggered that was when the gas company cut the road? Well, we could go right above that, right above them, it's already cut once. Um, now might be our opportunity to do it because there was discussion of paving a lot of Burn Dale roads.
Do it, I'd say.
That's a good idea.
Yeah. Uh, the downside is, I guess they were not looking at this road for pavement. But we know what they expect as far as paving, um. Same thing, before they would do it, it's better to cover our butts than not, since it's a planned thing, it's not an emergency. We can draw it up and propose it to them.
What's that print?
What they write down, we'll go by that and we don't get no complaints from them.
As far as boring it, they tried it before, we're not gonna get across this road. We would have to open cut it. The gas company struggled, so that would be a potential solution. I think a very good solution to the problems on this two-inch coming down and with their blessing, might be with something new. And we can, it won't cost us a lot to do it other than the paving. We have most of the material to do it already. Of course, we, we might need a few extra valves and, uh, depending on the pipe we use, I would say the most long-term thing would be to use a two-inch hex compression unless, I mean, we have, we could get Schedule forty.
Maybe you can do that or C nine hundred.
C nine hundred, yeah, that would be, that would be fine too, so, um, if the board's interested in pursuing that, we could potentially get, get a better ballpark on price, including the paving and everything and go from there.
Okay.
Anyone want to talk to next meeting?
You got the price?
We should, we do not, no, we don't have a price yet.
If you, yeah, get the price and I guess it'd be good to get it done before they decide to fix the road and have more issues.
We'll put that on new business.
All right. Okay, equipment trailer and addition off the existing building here at the office. We're not even gonna talk about it anymore until next year's budget.
So you want me to take that off the agenda?
Yeah, let's take that off.
So I'm gonna remove number eight and nine?
Number seven and nine, I mean, eight and nine. Yeah, I'm sorry, eight and nine.
Well, the equipment, if ever do find something, then we can bring it back up.
Yeah.
You know, if they find something.
Exactly, yeah. And, uh, tailgate on utility truck, that's done.
That's done. So are we, I guess to go back, should we tell Cold and Short? Good to go or no?
For what's that?
Well, I tell them, tell them that, uh, that we don't have a problem with it, but we gotta, we gotta get this meeting in so we can get the tap-on fee thing all figured out. This is the tap-on fee, this is how much it's gonna be if we gotta cut across the road.
If you wanna go and get that done, I mean, you could tell them it's more or less the way it's written in. We just wanna make it more explanatory.
All right.
And if we get to a point.
I think you'd better get that done.
Yeah, if the paving is what's in question, if we get to a point that the boring machine can't do it, we can.
Just dig it and.
Fill, fill the hole and abandon ship and then figure it out.
Vote on that, though.
I can't remember, that's what I was.
Cause I thought it was no on, on.
Oh, I do remember, when he wanted the application, I remember, yeah.
I remember, because it was the whole thing with boring across the road or having to pay for that, cut across the road.
Well, the problem is, he's, he's gonna have to pay if we have to fill it in and everything.
Exactly.
So he has to, as long as he knows that upfront.
That's what I'm trying to.
That's all I'm trying to say. As long as he knows upfront, listen, we come down whenever these guys get the time, but he's gotta understand, the way they want this road put back in, it might cost excess dollars. If you want it, here's what it's gonna pay. No problem. Okay?
So is that clear then?
Is that clear?
Yep.
So we just gotta make it clear with the owners. I mean, that's more or less what it says, but we, we wanted to make it more explanatory in order.
That's what it says in the rules and regulations, you just wanna, you wanna clarify it more.
We wanna clarify it more, as, no, I mean, it's, that's actually what it's saying. You're gonna have to pay excess more, so. If that's what it costs, it costs five hundred more, because we have to do what we gotta do, that's what it is. As long as he understands that.
Yep.
Okay, so he's not giving us bill that he don't understand.
Yeah, okay, and we, we still do have, um, Gambino.
Yes.
That, that does our digging.
Yeah.
All right.
Yeah, I'd say for anything big enough that we have to go under the road, I would.
Yeah, you'd probably have to do it.
Plus, he can put the skinny bucket in.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, very good. Okay, on a new business. Peach Street.
A very similar question, comment on that. That's the, uh, the house they're putting in behind an existing house, adding with a breezeway. I keep getting a lot of confusion on that, because then I hear, it's a unit, it's not a unit. It's getting physically attached to the house and it's not.
Separate house.
But, yeah, I guess it is a separate house, sewer is doing a separate tap, separate fee.
Separate meter.
Yeah, I thought we already connected.
Yeah.
It's a separate unit. Separate meters, because there's separate amenities, that's where we're running into problems here.
So I guess there's the two options there. You can do a separate meter in the basement or a separate tap. I would say since everyone else is doing separate tap, maybe that's where we need it.
Separate meters in my basement.
Yeah.
When it was an apartment.
Yeah.
And one for upstairs, one for downstairs.
Um, the township did say, if we do a separate tap, we are not allowed to cut the road. So.
If you do, oh, because of that new road.
Yeah.
Why do you have to cut the road in a separate tap?
If we put a separate tap on the main line and read them, and made them their own line, we would have to go under the road.
Is there a main over there?
On the opposite side, on, on Bob's side of the road.
Where are they getting water from now?
They have their own tap for the, for the existing house.
You can't go before that tap and, and go to the next house and put a meter in? That's what you have to do.
Back in my yard?
Similar, yeah, yeah. I think yours is a one inch at least, so you can, you can add more on that.
Well, I'm just saying, I'm just saying, I mean, I mean, if we have to, could we bore it here?
That would pretty much be the only other option if it was.
If we can't bore it, then we're at the hook before their meter and bring it around and.
Or I think I had mentioned, like, you can do the three-quarter. We dig the other side, shut the corp off and tee it, and you have two shut-offs. Um, there would be possibly some flow restriction, but.
I don't think it'd do that much.
Yes.
How'd they get that house in there? I'm just asking.
I don't know.
You know, I've seen it tonight. I, I seen where they took it in.
I don't know how they got it in there.
It had to be almost ready to roll over by then.
It's a separate house, I mean, you can't have a meter.
Oh, yeah, there's no doubt about it.
Yeah, that's what we're gonna run into here, getting in that situation.
It has to have a separate meter.
Can I ask a question here?
Sure.
Christine?
Yeah.
Go ahead, Christine.
Are there different people living in the trailer and a different family living in the front?
You tell us.
An extension of the same family.
Family extension?
Yeah, there's a trailer.
A daughter or granddaughter or something, just separate.
What if they have a problem with, well, you, we're not using that much water, it must be you.
Well, that would be, yeah, you would definitely want a separate shut-off. That would be an issue with putting two meters in the basement. They could, we, we could end up in a mess where we have to shut them both off and you wouldn't want that.
Don't want to.
So I would.
According to the regulations, this is gonna be one unit, so they are only going to pay one readiness to serve.
No, they would, they would be separate.
They'd be separate.
Each house has its own.
So if it's two units.
Yeah. So I guess the question I'm asking is, are we gonna try a separate tap? Or do we wanna tap off the existing three-quarter and have two shut-offs there?
I think you have high enough pressure there that three-quarter will be sufficient.
Okay, and that would be the less invasive, least invasive to the township.
Who, who approved to even put this house behind a house?
Well, it had to be proven at township.
Township.
And it had to be proven out of water in the sewers to put water in the sewer shit.
I think they did, they did that before anybody even called.
I, I don't remember, how long ago was that?
I remember in the fall.
I remember, we're still trying to prove that.
Yeah.
I mean, this is the issue, so, I mean.
So we'll.
Get it approved and if, the way you have to hook it up, if there's gonna be another meter, there's gonna be another gap.
Yeah, separate meter.
Separate tap.
But tee off of the existing tap for the main house.
Aren't there some kind of rules or laws? How closure, I wouldn't slam another house.
I've never seen that.
There are no zone.
There's no zoning. That's why it's like it is.
And the owner, the confusing part to me.
No, just a joke, just a joke.
The only reason I entertained having one meter was because it's gonna be the same address. It's not even gonna be an A or a B. It's gonna be the same address and they're going to have a physical net, physical connection between the two houses, like an enclosed breezeway.
No, it's a separate home.
That's not our fault.
It's not.
Yeah, it's, we're, just go ahead and.
But the issue would be what happens if they.
Yeah, we're supplying, we're supplying, right.
Well, we, we, we don't have the authority to.
Do that.
Make an address, A or B, you know what I mean?
I wonder what their addresses are though. Are they?
Forty, forty-five Peach.
That's, yeah, forty-five Peach.
Yep.
Not forty-five Peak Rear.
For our million purposes, we're gonna have to do something.
Yeah, we're gonna have to get rear or front.
Yeah, yeah. Oh, I've seen that many.
That's fine.
So tap off existing and separate meter.
Yeah.
Separate meter, separate tap.
Okay.
All righty.
Okay, that's right.
Hydro and sale.
Oh, that's at the turnip field.
That's, that's turning, yeah.
Okay, from what I gather here, if the personal property has an estimated fair market value of two thousand dollars or more, it can be sold through the bidding auction process. There has to be a notice by advertisement for bids or for public auction in one newspaper in the township. The advertisement must be published once, not less than ten days before. And then, if there, as far as that goes, if the fair market value of the personal property is less than two thousand dollars, the bidding or public auction process need not be utilized, so. And that, I mean, that's from our, that's from our. So.
So what are you gonna do?
Yeah, yeah, I mean, what, what, what's your.
Well, how much do you think it's worth?
What, what are they, the old fire hydrants?
The old fire hydrants from Forest, they're about twenty to twenty-five dollars worth in scrap.
I'll bet, so how much a piece?
Yeah, so.
Two thousand dollars.
So Jim had gone to the fire hall, obviously, that's like probably the most interested group there. Um, he went to the fire hall and bounced around some ideas and it seems like at forty dollars, he already has a list of like four or five.
Fantastic.
So they, they want four. That we have, I think we have five.
Okay.
That are eligible to get rid of and there could, and seems like he's got a lot of interest at forty bucks.
Forty bucks?
I don't understand why you just don't give them to them, it's the fire department, just give them.
Well, it'd be, if they're individual matters.
It's their own personal thing, it's not for the party, not for the fire department, so it's not the fire hall.
Okay.
But make a price give them.
Yep.
If it's not two thousand dollars, we don't have to put it off.
If you guys are okay with the forty, then I can give him the okay that, hey, make the list and we'll, we'll make record of who gone.
This is a good paper right here. We need to plaque that on the wall.
Yeah, it is, yeah.
Client memorandum.
So what, you, you need, wanna make a motion? Do that?
Yep.
Make a motion.
Forty dollars each, first come, first served.
Okay, okay, you need to make a motion, sell the four or five fire hydrants we have for forty dollars a piece.
Second.
First come, first served.
Who's second?
I second.
You second? No, I needed a motion.
Oh, I thought you said you were making the motion.
Oh, no, I'll make it, I'll tell you what, I'll make.
No, he, cause Debbie made it, I have it down.
All right, okay, and how about a second?
I'll make the second.
Good job. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, okay. Okay, meeting with Houston Township.
Another one, or we just had?
No, um, we have to discuss that and put our thoughts down. What we discussed to, to do the sale agreement, sale agreement.
Okay.
I don't know where Houston stands either, I haven't talked to her.
Okay.
So I don't know if we're supposed to put one, they're supposed to put one in and go to.
Well, we left there, now.
They wanted like a draft?
Tell me if I'm not wrong, we're gonna take the old draft. And we marked on our papers, I have one here. We marked them off the stuff that we wanted to take off. Because there's a lot of stuff when they were building, together with the Water Authority and Houston Township, uh, uh, with doing the well, with that stuff's all done. So in fact, I have mine, you have yours?
I have.
I know I have one here, but we do have a whole page that's gonna be gone.
Okay.
Okay, and the only thing they do want to leave on is something to do with the well because.
Cause Rosebud.
Rosebud Mining, we have some agreement for, so that'd be on there.
If they ever make theirs operation.
Uh, yes, and, uh, so whatever we went on there, we'll, we just have to rewrite it up.
Okay.
And that'd be for the next one year. And type it without the.
No, I thought they only wanted to go for five years, Gus.
I don't think we can because of the loan. The loan, if you read that, their loan agreement for that new line is 20, I think when you read it, it says 20 years.
It does.
Okay.
So you can't, years increment, and they only, we only have so much time to do this too, according to what I read.
Yeah.
Am I right or wrong?
You're right, that's what I read.
According, as long as they have that loan, I think they have to do it.
You weren't here. Is this new stuff?
Yeah.
This is from the Houston Township, so we need to.
So I can, we can retype.
Do you want my list? Jack Gus has one too.
I have one, I'll bring it here, it's at home, I must not.
Probably crush you though.
Involve of your list and his list.
Yeah.
Cause I know you guys were scratching everything out.
We scratched the whole page.
And then we'll look at it.
I'll bring mine up and I'll, I'll give it to you.
She can move on to it.
Look to the desk.
They're not bowing your papers.
But it was. Jimmy, there was a whole list of stuff that we, it was working on, we were reviewing.
Yeah.
Putting on, that stuff's done.
That's what I have.
Both of us decided that getting rid of all that stuff.
Yeah, yeah.
Just rewrite it.
All right. And, and they're good with that.
They're good with that, one thing they had something to do with, uh, I think Rosebud can't give it back.
Okay.
Can't keep their rights back to the well until they're done.
Oh, okay.
Then we're gonna get together again and go over that and then we're gonna hand it over to the attorneys. To make sure that we've got everything done. Yeah, so we're gonna type it on.
I'll bring it up to you, I'll bring it up to you.
Okay.
And I'll show you what we're supposed to ask.
Even if you wanna drop it and I drop, then I can make you a copy.
Can you see where I X things off and I? And I'll write, I'll write anything on here that I think we ought to put in or not put in and we'll go.
We'll put it in our copy and then we'll send one to Houston to see what they, what they wanna schedule, schedule another meeting. And then we'll hand it over to the attorneys, that's what they said what they were gonna do.
We get poked up, we'll make another meeting with them, go up and say, okay, you ready, let's see if it's okay.
So if you give me that, we'll get something typed up and, and we'll have to, and I'll talk to Gail in the meantime.
I'll get that for you, cause there's a lot of stuff that we.
Okay, I'll talk to Gail and see what she did with hers.
What about our lawyer? Does he have to be?
Well.
Once we, once.
Once we write it out.
Our lawyers.
To make sure we have all the.
We have it written.
Terminology right in it. And then we'll, then we'll prove it at our regular meeting.
Very good.
Okay.
Okay, on to the meeting with the sewer authority.
Okay, meeting with the sewer authority, uh, I think we've come to the conclusion that us charging each other for the readiness to serve is kinda stupid. And, and I mean, that's what we talked about.
We did.
As far as, we talked about back and forth, but that's up to the rest of the board. Yeah, I mean, they're charging us readiness to serve for the building, we're charging them readiness to serve for, you know, eating the water plant and the, the two inch line going to the thing. My opinion is, now, this is my opinion, you can take what you want and I sent it at the meeting, like.
Can I ask, is that the meeting?
Uh, Jim was there, we were pretty much all there.
Is in your minutes where, who are attended in there, there's the minutes where we approved that I gave you for Jay Township?
Pretty much everybody was there but a few of us.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Uh, but what I was saying, the only thing I don't agree with, I, I don't wanna give up any meter reads. I mean, we paid for that, we got thousands of dollars in those new meters, you know what I mean? So we can ride around and check these meters, we did that, make it efficient. So I don't think we ought to give that up, but I do think, why, why you charge a meter readiness to serve and I'm charging you? You know what I mean? I think we can get rid of that. They don't charge us for this building, we don't charge them for their office. They don't charge us for the water plant readiness to serve and they, we don't charge them for the cleaning plant, like that little place in Forest. They don't turn it on because we're gonna charge them a readiness to serve charge. They're lucky if they use.
Yeah.
Put five gallons.
They actually turn it back on and it's, it hasn't turned over.
So I think, I think that, you know, as, as, I mean, we got to probably just write them a letter, I wouldn't make a big agreement with it, it's just a.
I think it's.
Write them a letter and just put it in a letter stating, we acknowledge that, I mean, we're still gonna charge, you're gonna read the meters like always. But we're not gonna charge you a readiness to serve charge for the pop, for the restroom and, uh, the readiness to serve charge for the office and for that little place in Forest, so that's three.
I would just be concerned with what happened last time.
What's that?
The agreement was never finalized and that's why we're where we're at now.
No, it wasn't finalized, no, they just, they just.
I think we should do is put it on agreement, have both boards sign it and then it's, it's legal if we just do it and say so by a letter.
Like a letter like last time.
Oh, a letter, I'm saying you have to write down the letter.
A little agreement that we go by, have both boards sign it and then you go, you know.
Yeah, the only thing, like I said at that meeting, the last time they broke it, that was a total agreement, an agreement that was signed, they just totally broke it.
Well, the, the letter, they could ignore the letter also if you both don't sign it.
They can ignore the letter too.
And I mentioned that too.
As long as both sides do it, that's, that's the main thing.
If they, if they break it, we go back to pre-agreement with how it is now.
I think it should be a agreement.
And they can't get mad because they initiated or vice versa.
Write it up as an agreement.
I think it should write an agreement, have both boards sign it.
That we're not gonna charge each other.
If somebody breaks the agreement, then it's.
There's nothing wrong with a little.
But I mean, this, this whole board's gotta think about this a minute and.
I wanna ask a couple questions.
Sure.
Yes. It's probably what I was gonna say.
I think it should definitely, when the chairman is writing the draft, give it to your attorney to review.
No, I said, I said that in the joint meeting.
So much has happened in the past.
Oh, yeah.
An attorney would be rich to look at it.
Make it binding.
Also, I would, may I speak?
Yeah.
Yes. You asked when you give the attorneys, you give them the ruling of the Office of Open Records, which I sent to both the water authority and the sewer authority. Keep in mind that those meter readings were paid for by the people who are using the both water facilities, sewer facilities. So those people, it pays for these readings once. So just get that all through attorney too.
We paid for that.
Can I ask, what?
What's that?
What brought the meeting for?
Well, they always wanted the meeting, that was for. Joining the board.
After one of the original joint meetings.
They wanted to follow up.
They wanted to follow up, so we, we sit down and we had a meeting with them and that's one thing that we talked about, it being, you know, why are we charging each other in readiness to serve charge? We can't give up our gallons of water, that's our business. And I know what Bob's saying, but we, we bought that off the sewer and I know it's the public, but the water company had bought everything. There's a history to show for that. So we, we, we have to charge by the gallons. That's what we, that's where our business is.
And basically, the, the only leg we had to stand on when that agreement was broken was, you can't withhold a document that exists. They wanted the file for their download, um, and we did not create the file, so we were not obligated to give them that file.
Well, it don't matter.
So they're looking for a solution to resolve that.
Well. Does this, does this satisfy the treating, just a minute Bob, um, does this satisfy the treating every customer the same rule?
Well, it sure does because somebody has to pay for the readings.
Yeah, somebody does have to pay for the readings, but, um, if we don't charge them for readiness to serve, then they would be a special kind of customer.
They're not charging us either.
Yeah, they're not charging us.
Then we would be a special kind of customer.
That's why I said.
Two customers helping out each other too.
Yeah, I, I look at it as that, I mean, Bob, maybe Bob has something to throw in there, Bob, go ahead.
I don't know how enforceable it is, go ahead.
Okay, uh, you know, I kinda lost track of my mental thoughts here, but once again, I'm hearing this statement, we and they. You know, I, I think it'd be better if we looked at this as a whole community and we, even water people I've heard say pay for all this equipment. And no, the users pay for it. I don't think anybody on that board, whether it's the bill for the water, it was the people in this community that are subscribers in the Jay Township water system. Uh, I'm not one of them, but, uh, I do have a meeting here on the house and it can be read whenever they want. But I'm suggesting that the people, the majority of your customers already paid for these readings once. And these readings, as far as billing is what you're looking at, maybe as, but on a program, we should give paper sheets and convert those to electronic data, like scanning, I, I, uh, read you can maybe do this with Google Sheets, I haven't tried it yet. It's just that, you know, if that's the case, then beating this dead horse is all new. Now, the second thing for those readings, somebody with a little practice here, you can take that data and boy, this, this is going to be a powerful tool if we can get law operation between the water and sewer, or you can go to different areas of the township and see how they're contributing to the wastewater system. And you can get some insertion meters and put in wastewater lines and do some studies. But, you know, the data goes further, further than just compiling information for water. And in the end run, if they can identify infiltration and reduce infiltration, the cost benefit to everybody in this community that's users of the sewer system, they're all gonna be, uh, have a payback to it. So, uh, I, I, I think we gotta get past saying we and they. Let's say us.
Hush, dear, hush.
All together, address this issue.
And I, in the joint meeting, I had given my recommendation as far as the readings. My opinion as a water customer community, well, I guess partial community member, um, as a taxpayer, um, and water customer, um, I, it's, if they don't have to pay for the readings, big deal, it just goes back to the conflict started with the breaking of an agreement. We need to do something to move past that and get something on paper to do that. Uh, Deb, when you were here, um, I had also included possibly giving them the sludge from the di, from our basins to go into their digestion. And I did analysis on it, um, and I'm gonna present that to them and Brian knows what it is and he's gonna talk to Tom and we're looking at the feasibility of that. So as, I guess in a nutshell, um, to go back to like Christine's question of is it fair to treat them differently? I would say as long as all of the exchange of service numbers are close and it's not hurting either authority, then it should be fine. The red flag I saw with that was they are very high water consumption on their press building. I don't think the water authority should be able to try to, and afford taking that burden. And they seem to not argue that, so we're gonna pull the numbers together and see how close they are, see how far apart they are and see what's even feasible.
I think that's feasible, I mean, yes, I mean, that's, that's been a.
You look at the price of each one.
Mm-hmm.
So that's what you.
I think we have to do a study or something.
Study on the price of each one.
Go from this obvious board, they've never taken our sludge.
Right.
Never, and.
They sound optimistic that they may be able to.
They could, um, to our cost, if we could do our cost study and hand it to them and say.
Yeah.
Well, that's our, our cost study is gonna be easy in terms of that, we have water meter reads on their side, it's gonna be up to them to, to put a cost of taking that sludge.
Yes.
Whether it's whatever we had quoted out to haul it somewhere else or if it's stated in their rules and regulations somehow.
In one way or another, okay, whatever X amount is, I mean, even if we paid them as a lump sum of bill and they're still paying their costs of their water for their press building, it's still an exchange and whatever cost more, you're properly getting compensated, so there's a solution.
If this is a solution, that, that'd be great, you know?
That'd be fun.
Yeah.
Good support community.
Do the study and put your numbers together, I mean.
And even, even if it's not, like I said, okay, we pay sewer, we pay, they pay water, it's, even if you don't do it as a straight exchange, at least have something in writing as, we agree to give readings, they agree to take sludge, they blah, 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 blah and meet frequently to see if that's still okay and, because it's, I guess exchanging the services is just a matter of, if you're billing, you're still exchanging services, it's just.
Yeah, you're just.
They're writing, it eliminates the check writing process, I guess.
The readiness to serve, billing each other, you just, I don't see that at all.
Come up with in comparison, so either way.
Far as the flow of the water, the cost of the water and the cost of source, you have to see what it comes out to be.
That's why you can do the study.
That's why you do the study, then we'll go again.
Do we have a timeline on that?
Um, whatever, I would say at least by whatever time you, whatever you guys wanna meet, it won't be, it won't take long to do.
And, and with their side providing numbers too?
I don't know, I'm not sure.
Okay. Who, who you? How, how will that happen? I mean, we're sitting off here talking about it, but they don't know that.
We'd have to.
Well, they have a meeting, when, do they have a meeting next week?
Next Thursday.
I can ask Lisa, see if they're gonna do a study on that.
And then once they know, schedule me together.
And I go to, I go to meetings and.
Oh, good.
Yeah. Let, I know we're studying, oh, see if they can study their stuff and.
Hey, if it works out, it's great.
Yeah. Alrighty. Okay, then we added a couple down there, one was a, an intern or?
Uh, the backup secretary.
Backup secretary, alright, and we had, I mean, Patrick used to be the backup secretary before, correct?
Prior, prior to this flow chart.
Yeah, and this is just when if she's emergently out or something.
But I think they don't have it on the books.
We need a resolution.
We're talking about secretary, first you understand, like if she can't come, if he, he can get into the computer and do the things that need to be done.
If she, if she has to take some.
Yeah.
I told her today, I'm like, I, you don't know if I wanna be relied on that.
I was gonna say.
No, it's just, it's just for about assistant secretary too. We've had it before.
To, to put that on the wayside and secure.
They won't need a resolution.
Well, if you don't wanna do it, then you have to look into something.
When we were transitioning between her and Jamie, um, I would spend afternoons up here, cause there were bills coming in and stuff like that. I don't have a problem taking some extra time.
You can just snap it out.
If needed, but, um.
But it, he was the backup secretary, we just didn't put it on the flow charts.
Well, I mean, do you wanna do this so we can vote on it, or it's up to him, I mean, we can't tell him.
Put it this way, if it's, if it's an absolute emergency where she has to be gone for a little bit.
Yeah.
Who's gonna be the person that probably ends up doing it anyway?
He will.
Yeah.
Me, so.
Yeah, so.
Alright, so we need a vote?
Yeah, and I'll have to put it in a resolution.
I just don't, I just don't want to.
It's on the command, right?
She's gonna quit, we have the secretary for three months.
Do enough to keep the ship floating, but not gonna be a.
Yeah, we, we understand and you understand.
And I'd probably ask some board members for helping her.
Alright, we, uh, so we need a motion to put Patrick.
Like it was before.
Yeah, like it was before, as assistant secretary in case emergency, you can't show up for whatever.
For essential secretary.
Yeah.
And that's it.
So, can I have a motion for that? Okay, and can I have a second? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Alright, all opposed?
Are you doing a bail?
No.
Thanks.
Gotta put that in your motion.
Yeah, no pit.
If that's a, if I'm, if I'm not.
You're gonna be here anyway, you're gonna get paid.
Yeah. If I don't get paid, I officially resign as a.
He's gonna be doing those jobs.
It lasted three minutes.
Same.
Yes.
Well, I guess maybe we need to keep track of, because your rate and Sharon's is different, is what I think.
So, yeah, so that, that makes it get sticky, will I, then, will I clock out down there and go to secretary? Because technically at that point, I would be beyond my overtime.
In your case.
That's a good question.
Well, how was, how was it before, Patrick?
You can decline this if that's the case.
Yeah, any, anything before, whatever time I put it up here, just went towards my normal, my normal time. Put it this way, I respectfully, I am operator and I did not apply to be assistant secretary. By all means, if you need me, I'm here.
Exactly.
But to say, am I really? I guess here's the proposal, if I'm gonna clock out down there and clock in here on a separate timesheet for.
No, it's gonna remain, it's gonna remain.
Mean as it was before because you weren't.
And I think it's.
Yeah.
So put that.
Yeah, pace scale will be the same as it was prior to this.
As needed and emergencies only.
I have another question, Bob, the assistant secretary, does this person have to be bonded?
That's a very good question.
Yep.
Yeah.
Yeah, that is, if you have to play with the money or that, you're gonna have to be bonded, so we're gonna check that out.
Yep.
You have to do the background.
That shouldn't be an issue.
Is the secretary now bonded?
Yes.
I'm pretty certain an assistant secretary has to be bonded also, but.
Yeah, that's fine. Get them bonded.
That's a Randy question, he'll take care of all that.
Alright. Okay, on to our intern, we wanted to, what, we wanna.
We're going for it, no, no, like you can sign.
What's the decision on the bond?
Are you wanting some check?
Yes.
I mean, for you.
Okay, as long as other people are.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, you can sign, that's what I'm saying.
I'm, I'm just, with a job, just always gone lots of ways sometimes.
No, Lisa and Deb and I signed it.
Yeah.
Voted, they have to be voted in to do that.
That's essentially what spurred this.
Yeah.
I can reach though, because the township secretary doesn't have an assistant secretary.
Well, I guess I'll finish next thing, the issue we had was with Deb being out of town, um, and me no longer being board member, we had issues, who signs the checks, cause she can't sign her own check.
We'll just get you bonded and we don't have to worry about that.
So it's absolute.
Are there board members that can sign a check?
We have two board members that sign it.
We're good to go.
Yeah, but no, we're talking, we're talking computer stuff.
I don't know anything about that.
This is.
It's just in an extreme emergency, if something happened, happened in the past.
Patrick's coming up here every day and be secretary for five hours.
Oh, my God, no.
Yeah, all it is is an emergency, that's all it is, it's just going back to the way that it always was.
Check the phone, play the messages and at worst.
Yeah.
It was just an emergency, what happened.
Why we did this is because of what happened before, the secretary left and that was it, bang, so we, you know, we're not gonna let that happen again.
Yeah, to the extent that it went was strictly what I said, I checked the messages, checked the emails. I didn't even deposit any checks. You, you could make in the resolution that I'm not to handle any of the finances, then that avoids the bonding.
Yeah.
Oh, is it?
Yeah.
I don't know.
Your insurance company bought this.
Yeah.
Yep.
They were able to tell you.
Yep, cause what I did last time, like Sharon was away for a week with her family one time and.
And I come back and did all those deposits.
I took, like I received the mail, received the checks, put them in a safe place and she dealt with them when she got.
Board member, I would have to be bonded if I had, if I had to do it?
No.
You're a board member.
Yeah, so, okay.
Board members are, have insurance, you guys are covered under the insurance.
He's not a board member now, so he has to do that.
Right, right. So that's the whole issue right there, cause he was the board.
Ask Randy if, if I'm specifically not handling the money, if I would be, cause that would be a situation, it takes liability off of me and if you're, I mean, if you're gone longer than it takes to bounce a check, that, we'd have other issues. If it's gonna be a week or so, we'll let them stack up.
Yeah.
We did last time and I come back in the middle of the week and did them all.
Yeah.[1710.84]
It's just for emergency purposes on that.
Yeah, I think everybody knows that.
Check the mail, check the email, check the phones. Answer questions.
Done deal. Same as you did before.
Sign checks as she's.
Yeah.
Good point.
Okay. Okay, now on to our intern. So what do we want, what do we want to do here? We want to.
Uh, this will be the same as last year with what we had with William.
Like the fee.
Yeah, similar. They, they reimburse up to 65%.
And he works from like May, they got the starting date, May 4th, but they only come out with this to August 28th. They work 40 hours a week. They learn how to do different things at the plant, the water authority. We can keep the intern for two years if this here works out.
They help Sharon do some filing work up here. Jim and Justin have a list of things that they can definitely do.
Yeah, just like we have with.
Cut a little grass.
Is that from Hall or is it regular?
Well, we got it, we're going to advertise it. We just had to, we have to get this agreement in by Friday. I submitted it today because I won't be here, so if you didn't vote for it, then I was going to have to call Sherri Cunningham and tell her we have to withdraw. But I had to get this in because I'm not in tomorrow. So they just got this. This usually comes out earlier, but they only finally got the funding for it now. So.
Reports, okay.
Okay.
And they actually work 40 hours a week?
Thirty-five to 40 hours a week, yes.
Oh, because the township ones don't.
This one works 35 to 40 hours a week. That's what we have to do. That's what it's on this in.
And they pay 65%.
They pay 65% of the wages, yes.
That's from North Central.
It's what North Central used to be.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're first solutions of North Central.
Yeah. So I just need a motion, so.
Okay. How about a motion to proceed with, uh, putting, putting it in the paper to get an intern for this summer?
Submit the application.
Submit the application. Got a motion for that?
No, I'm making a motion.
Okay, Sharon make the motion. Have a second, Deb, I mean.
Do you have a longer for Bill?
Julie seconded it.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
So if anybody knows of anybody calling the command field, naming or whatever.
If they approve.
If, if they approve us, we have to wait for approval from them.
Mm-hmm. Wonderful. Okay, so now we're going to adjourn.
No, we're ready, we're ready to serve, correct? No, John, did we do that already? Did we add readiness to serve to it?
We got one more. We got that to do, then we can, oh, I'm sorry, I exactly sectioned.
Yeah.
So we better get this going.
I don't really know much about that. That letter kind of is pretty vague in terms of.
What Sharon is holding is a letter notifying us that unfortunately we did not get our, the 4,000 some I applied for, for our grant, um, to run fiber out of the back of the plant to the well. Um, I had discussed, I'd like to see that happen either way because.
Fiber?
Fiber optic, yes.
Yes, I know.
Yes.
How much bandwidth do you need from the well, Patrick?
You can't run, you can't run Cat 5 that length.
You can't run Cat 5 that length?
No.
Okay, what else can you run?
Fiber is your next, otherwise radio, we've had problems with radios.
What about phone line? You can do ADSL.
Cat, Cat 5 is about the same type line as phone line.
No, it isn't. No, it isn't.
Well, when I, I guess when I talked to the Skate Company, they said our next option was fiber.
Holy.
So, yeah, but I have, I had the quote for that.
That's a lot of money, I think.
Well, put it this way, it's priceless. So we have.
What's, what problem does it solve?
If something happens that I cannot run the plant and I have to run the well and there's a communication loss, the valley is without water.
And why wouldn't you be able to run the well?
Because of communication losses through the radio.
And you can't drive up there and look at it?
I can't. And if there's a chlorine problem, we put the valley at risk. If it doesn't feed chlor- if the plant, if the well can't talk to the plant, I have no clue what the chlorine.
Now, you shrugged your shoulders like that was no big deal if the valley was out of water.
No, I shrugged my shoulders because I know what fiber optics are. And I know what it costs for the equipment on both ends. And I think it's overkill.
This is the stuff that you've been studying for quite a while.
Yeah. It actually was bad enough, Jeremy told me two years ago, we need to explore a hardwire to that well.
A hardwire, yeah.
Yes. And that hardwire is fiber, it's, it's too far to run anything else.
What kind of bandwidth are we talking?
I don't know, I can ask that.
Yeah, you need to know that because if it's just a bandwidth issue, you can do it over copper.
So you, you have to carry a four to 20 milliamp signal from here to the well that's over 1,000 feet.
Four to 20 milliamp signal?
Yes.
Why?
So that, that tells the.
Isn't a data signal that you're getting?
Yes. Yes.
Well, I want to know bandwidth.
Yeah, so you have to, you have to tell the pumps when to start and stop, tell the chlorine meter when to start and stop, how fast to run, how fast the flow is running at the well.
So I, data?
Yeah.
Megabytes.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah.
As far as the well is concerned, how many discrete inputs and outputs would it take to run the well? And how many, you talked about rates, so I assume you're looking for an analog?
The, that's a question I asked them. I said, how many pair of fiber do I need? I guess Jeff was just looking for one input and one output. Because, and then, then what we could also do is have a computer up there and I can view it also, like start, I could start and stop the well remotely and everything rather than just being on manual mode. That's a question beyond me, I guess. But they told me the option is fiber.
Who are you talking to?
The Skate Company, the people that design our communication systems.
Keenberry Systems.
Yeah, Keenberry Systems.
Keenberry Systems?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep. The, the radios are very unreliable when I need them.
Hopefully advocating for them in.
And their radio, let me ask you a question. You can read a whole town's worth of meters from your truck. You can't take a meter up there.
I need this to read the meters and I need this to read the meters.
Yeah, for one location.
Yes.
But to the, but to the well, you need to run a fiber line.
Because I'm reading those within 100 feet or so of the house. It's short range communication only.
Oh, okay.
It works, it's sort of like Bluetooth.
Okay.
It's like their own proprietary.
Oh, it's sort of like Bluetooth.
Yes.
Yeah, we can mount a bunch of routers on the trees between here and there.
You could.
No, you don't need to do that.
You could. You need power though.
You know, I don't do, we put that on the wish list and when we have the extra money like we did to Gate.
I thought we did budget for that too.
You know, I don't know, I can't remember budgeting that, but I remember talking about it in the last month or so, you draw it up.
Put it this way, the, what typically when I need the well is when it's storming. Guess when I have the most communication losses?
When it's storming.
It's not as bad in the winter because the trees don't scatter the signal. When the leaves are on the trees, I start losing it. When the trees are wet and it's, and it's foggy and stuff, the signal is terrible.
And how much is that that you're, you're saying it's going to cost back?
My quote was like a little bit over 4,000.
Julie, are you available during the days?
It may not hurt.
If you, if you would not sit in on a Keenberry Systems call, you should be fairly well versed in that.
That was mine.
Go ahead, Bob.
Uh, a guy I used to work with, he went into business for himself, but one of the things he did, uh, he, uh, I guess you can buy him, but they're, to use cell phones to monitor these remote oil wells, you know, up in King County and various places. I'm not sure of the full spectrum of what they're able to do, but also here in Weavell, we're getting a cell phone tower up across the road from you. Now, that may open another.
Yes.
Option to what you could do there.
Yeah.
Uh, Miss Dean, if you want to contact him, you can talk to him a little bit.
That might be a good idea.
Bob, the only downfall I've ever seen to those, if you do have the service for them, they're great.
If they're what?
If you have the service for it, like if, if we do get a cell phone tower here.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
The only disadvantage to something like that compared to if we run a hardwire line is I'm sure there's going to be some kind of service fee or monthly charge.
Oh, yeah, I, but, I mean, I'm, you'd have to do a payback analysis because Julie's talking about the high cost of running the fiber that distance. I don't know how they compare.
Well, it's not the fiber that costs, it's the equipment that runs the fiber that connects to everything else.
It's just, uh, they included that in the quote.
They did?
The converter boxes and everything, yeah.
Oh.
Yeah, that's a total price?
Yes. Yeah, that is.
Well, that's not so bad then.
Right, that is.
I don't want to do it, but it's still not bad.
That's, that's total price with us helping them as much as we can pulling it through the pool boxes.
But that was.
But they would do the splicing. Uh, it was a little over 4,000. I, it's a, there's a copy of it here somewhere, I didn't bring it with me.
So you're going to run the fiber up through the same conduit where you get the power?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
I don't understand.
How far apart do they have the pool boxes?
I'm not sure, I would have to measure.
I'm not sure.
Are they buried?
They're exposed, there, there's access to them.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, that sounds like maybe you could put our way there.
Yeah, so they would do the splicing, they would do the converter boxes to convert it from, uh, fiber to ethernet, and then it would just go straight to the PLCs on either side. So.
Okay.
Yeah, I would table it either way, Sharon says table. Um, the good part is, um, they denied it because they want to see that funding go to, um, some other people that may not be eligible for the Act 13 mini grant program for upwards of 50, or total sum of $50,000. So they said if we have a bigger project, we could include this on, um, that might be a good opportunity to do that. So the light bulb turns on, Brian was discussing tank mixing, solutions at the well, we might be able to include this as a well improvement project and apply for both.
There you go.